Call this meeting, your honor, this is the special session of the American Council of the City of Bisbee, Kansas, the Chiefs of State of Arizona, to be held on Tuesday, November 20th, 2018, at 5:30 PM, the County Board of Supervisors Hearing Room located at 1415 Melody Lane, building G, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Cornaut, would you please call it over?
Councilmember Anne Fine, Councilmember Joe Hansen.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor David Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Will Hiddick.
Here.
Mayor Tim Douglas Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Winstock.
Here.
City staff, Robert Smith, city manager, Ashley Cornaut, state clerk, Carrie Madden, finance director, Dwayne Wallace, operations manager, Haldor Junior, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a number of people signed up and, obviously, it's a single item, so everybody's signed up for item number one. And what we're going to do is I'm going to open up this item number one. We're going to have a presentation and then we will allow everybody to take their three minutes. The reason I'm doing that is there may be some information in the presentation that takes some of the questions that you may have or may answer some of the questions you have. So, thank you, ma'am. So, Mr. Smith?
Mayor, council, thank you very much. We're pleased to bring this item to you. I call your attention to the screen, I have a couple of slides to go through, and then I'd like to introduce some of the Jacobs books that have been working with us. Starting with the most recent ADEQ Notice of Rialation, we became aware in July of some significant risk and liability related to the organization and the operation of the wastewater treatment facility. And around about August, we came to the conclusion that we may need to do something about staffing at the facility. So, we began looking to see if we could hire people or if we needed to go to a company and get services, begin evaluating the landscape. And we found in short order that skill sets weren't available locally or regionally to staff the plant effectively and get the plant compliant quickly with ADEQ. That's how we wound up coming to the council suggesting an interim operator from Pima County's wastewater division to assist us with that at the plant. So, around about August, we determined we needed to look outside of the Bisbee area for staffing at the plant. As we began conducting a search process at the plant, we turned to the city's procurement code and the city's charter. The city charter in section present dictates how contracts are handled and who authorizes what. And city code, Article 3.5 dictates how to go about getting help in a project like this. Formal sealed bids were indicated and that's what we pursued. We selected the most appropriate responsive contractor based on input that we received from committee of citizens as well as staff. Per Code 354 and the charter, we now recommend to council, this is part of this process, we recommend to council the contract, the firm that we've identified, and we bring this to you for your consideration in meeting the needs at the wastewater treatment facility. If you look at operations at the plant over time, this is a rough cut analysis of what we have spent this year, we have a budget in the mail, we're not through the year yet. On average, we've spent about $665,000 here staffing and working with the plant. The Jacobs contract contains a cost totaling $731,000. There's $75,000 in there for repair or replacement if needed. If those monies are not spent, they are, they were made with the city. There is only one year that includes emergency reserves in this chart, and that is this year. And that is why that number's not 601,000, it's 901,000. Looking at what we're doing with the wastewater enterprise, we're now collecting past due amounts and we're collecting more of our user fees timely. That's putting more cash flow into that enterprise for us to work with. Recently, I think September, August, September, we concluded restructuring the debt in the wastewater treatment enterprise. And that put about $600,000 in free cash flow back into that business unit and has made it available for that business unit to use. With that, we are presenting to council a more stable rate table for the next 10 years that has very minor incremental adjustments year over year. We want to use those resources that we have just freed up to increase the quality and the efficiency and the sustainability of our operation at the wastewater treatment plant. That plant has been starved for resources for a long time and it has not been adequately staffed. We also need a plan for capital improvement at the plant. And at the end of this year, we will have budgeted depreciation for $1.3 million and that should be available for us to begin assembling a capital program for the plant. So, the graphic here basically shows the total sewer fund budget at $3.3 million. The non-contract charges of $2.2 million are debt service and transfers and there are things that aren't part of the physical work and operation of the unit. There's about $200,000 in collections and about $900,000 in wastewater treatment plant operations budget. The Jacobs contract again at $731. One of the things I wanted to highlight was the structure of the Jacobs contract. They actually are proposing to spend more money on people than we were. They are budgeting for four full-time positions at the plant. We have only had three. They are proportionally spending more money on those four people than we proportionally spend on the three. And you'll notice their operational expense at $269 is significantly lower than our operational expense, but they are able to purchase things at rates that we cannot. They have purchasing cooperative agreements and bulk buying power that we couldn't think about matching. So, again, we're looking at about a 22 percent chunk of the total fund going towards operation for the wastewater treatment plant, and that will be under the Jacobs contract. Our budget currently has about a 27 percent chunk of going towards that. One thing to note over there on the ground, if Jacobs does work for you, they bear all of the safety and environmental liability for their activity at the plant. And I can't stress enough the trouble that we were in with the state and the NOB. Those would be issues that we wouldn't be worrying about. I also say that if council entertains a contract at this point in time, we would actually be reviewing the contract twice a year because we would review it on its anniversary date near the turn of the calendar year and then again evaluate it and price it and review it during the middle of the year for budget season. We'll be passing budgets in June, July. Lastly, Jacobs will be talking a little bit about their regional support network. They have a significant presence here in Arizona and particularly with Pima County, and I'm sure that they'll highlight that. Lastly, I just wanted to breeze through a general concept. The wastewater treatment enterprise is key to the city's sustainable operation. The wastewater treatment enterprise has lost money every year for over the last 10 years and now owes the general fund about $5.5 million. If it wasn't chewing through general fund reserves, those monies would have been here for the general fund to operate more effectively for the city. In trying to correct that, collecting the utility bills that are out there is super important. Restructuring the debt, easing some of that pressure, putting free cash back into the enterprise is what's going to make that enterprise actually work. And establishing a flat, long-term rate table will take some of the pressure and unends off of our utility customers, knowing what to expect over the next five to 10 years, I think is important. The contract with Jacobs would eliminate liability, both safety, physical, and environmental liability, but it would also increase the quality and operation of the plant. And I'm most interested in their maintenance and capital improvement program, which has been sort of lacking. You know, we spent, I think, $17 million getting started with this plant, we still don't have a capital improvement program. Reducing electrical consumption at the plant, that's something that we've talked about. We've talked about LED streetlight conversion. We've talked about changing pumps out at the plant. If I can reduce how much electricity I use at the plant, I'm not sending that money to APS. And if I reduce the amount of electricity that I'm using at the plant, I may have more surplus electricity on my solar array that I could sell back to APS. I may be able to create cash flow just by working with improving some of the equipment at the plant. The reason why I mention all this is freeing up the cash flow, getting the utility bills in, working efficiently, that all goes towards this fund being able to pay the general fund back. And if the sewer fund could give the general fund half a million dollars a year, that would be 10 years worth of payments that could be used to get our personnel complement back to market rate for their salary compensation. Lastly, I think if we do get to the point where we're operating efficiently as a business and we're paying the general fund back, we also owe it to the environment to look at recharge or something like that, where we're using this plant to create positive environmental impacts for our community and the future generations. Are there any questions that council has on where I just presented?
Turn it up.
I have one question. You said that the contracts could be renewed twice a year. At that time, you have, I know that it said in the agreement that we could cancel it up to 120 days of termination. So, at that time too, we could cancel the contract if we feel like it's not working out?
I believe that no was with 120 days notice, but I'll have to check.
Go ahead.
I think that if you get to the point where you're dissatisfied with Jacobs' work and for whatever reason you want to separate, and there's no cure that's going to work for the council to make things right, we go through the notice and separation process. They pledge to transition out of the plant and help the city get, you know, fresh employees or whatever it is that the city does on their feet and going. There's language in there for that. But the reason why I said reviewing it twice a year, the scheduled date for renewing the terms of the contract and negotiating potentially additional terms in the contract is on a calendar year and it would be on the anniversary date of the adoption of the contract. However, six months after that, we're going to be looking ahead into the next year to determine what do we need to be doing at the plant, where are our costs going to be, and what do we need to prepare for. And I like it that that forces us to dive into the contract, look and see what the performance is, and then project. So, we're actually analyzing our financial situation twice a year, not once a year. Did that answer?
I know there's been some question about being able to cancel the contract by year, and so what would be the consequences of canceling it? Would there be any type of payment that would have to be made, aside from what they have done at that point? Would there be anything extra that would be accounted for?
I believe coming current with them on the work that they perform is the end-all there. I don't think that there's penalties or anything like that. But I'm sure that Jacobs could clarify your point on that, and I would like to introduce them to council if there's no additional questions.
Please.
I have a question. I just, I mean, to me, it seems like it's a major decision. And at what point can I motion that we table this until the new council comes on?
Make that right decision.
Well, I motion that we table this until the new council comes on. This is a major decision that they're going to have to live with. And rather than just hand them this, I think there should be part of the process. So, my motion is to table this until the new council comes on.
Second. We have the second. Any further discussion? Those in favor of tabling this until the new council comes on, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I invite Lisa, where are you, Lisa? Oh, there you are. Lisa, would you join us at the podium and maybe introduce us and get a follow-up?
You guys have a question, too? Good evening, council. My name is Lisa Overmeyer. I'm with Jacobs Engineering Group. I'm based out of Portland, Oregon, and I go with my clients all around the West. But people I really want to, yes, of course.
Please, audience, please, everybody.
Yes, sure. The people I really want to introduce and who are going to make the presentation for us tonight are David Saons and Chris Maines. So, why don't you guys come up and introduce yourselves. Here's your speaker.
It is probably smarter than that. Welcome. Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity. And my name is David Saons. I'm the Southwest Regional Director, work out of Alamo, New York. And this is Chris Maines. He's the Regional Business Manager and he is presently office in Prescott Valley, Arizona. So, he and I have the joint pleasure of supporting the Southwest region and the projects and the customers that we serve in the Southwest. So, what I'm, on my agenda and I'll try to accomplish in my five minutes is just to help you understand a little bit about who Jacobs is, what we, who we are, what we offer, and what you can expect from us as a partner for the city of Bisbee, should the council select to move forward. I will be discussing a little bit about our general approach and then turn it over to Chris to discuss specifically what the plans are for the city of Bisbee. Now, this is kind of a busy slide, but it's, it's, the one part I would like to call out is the 32 years in the Southwest. And this is O&M, and this, our first contract was in a community very similar to Bisbee, and it was Grants, New Mexico. And I don't know if you're familiar with Grants, but it was a mighty community. It was uranium, not copper, so there's other issues. But that was actually my first assignment with the company. I moved to Grants, New Mexico as the project manager in 1994. So, a big part of that 32 years has included myself supporting the Southwest. And kind of that leads us to the slide where I'd like to point out that 60 percent of our O&M clients, municipal governments, are, 60 percent have a population of less than 10,000. This is, this is where we offer the best value. And this, this is driven largely because of state and federal regulations and requirements that make it so onerous for a small to medium-sized municipality to even keep up with the regulations, let alone have the science and technology to keep, to meet the more, the higher level and the more stringent requirements. That's what we offer. We've got the bench strength and the depth. And I'd like to point out real briefly, Ruben Aranda is one of the regional resources I'll be pointing out. Ruben was in, we were in the office together when I got the call last week about today's meeting. And Ruben said, you know, hey, what's going on in Bisbee? And I told him, and I said, going to go? And so, he jumped in the car with me today and we drove on down. So, he, you know, he's the regional manager, or regional health and safety manager, lives in Grants, supports all of the projects in the Southwest, and he would be an intricate part of the team here, supporting the local team that we would have onsite delivering this project to ensure their health and safety. Also in the audience is Greg Smith. Oh, I'm going to go to the next slide. Greg is the project manager at our Pima County project just outside of Tucson. 30 years with the company? You've been here longer than me.
Long time.
Yeah, yeah, a long time. So, he was in our Key West, Florida for the longest, and now he's in Pima County. And he and his staff of, looks like 15, are available to support Bisbee as well. So, just wanted to introduce you to Greg. And I believe, oh, you met Lisa, so that's, that's that. So, here's the Southwest. This is the, this is the area that I'm responsible to support. And you can see, I mean, you know, from Dodge City, Kansas, small community in Kansas to Fort Bluffton, a couple of communities outside of Santa Fe, New Mexico, as I mentioned, Grants and Gallup, Prescott Valley, that's where Chris lives in his office, Pima County. And Bisbee's just, just right there. Every, you know, we've got resources in all of these communities and in all of these projects that, well, I don't know if I've got a better word for us, that we can deploy as needed to ensure each of our customers get what they need. See, I was going to talk a little bit more about the regional resources. We've got compliance specialists. We've got, actually have a regional compliance lab and compliance person in Rio Rancho that will be a part of the support team as well as the laboratory that we leverage in Pima or that we operate in Pima. Health and safety, maintenance. We've got two, actually two regional maintenance people that support the Southwest. And the one that covers the south end is Mark Baker, and he would be instrumental and key in setting up the asset registry, every component of your plant, not just belt press, but the pieces of that belt press will be a part of the comprehensive maintenance management system that's part of what we bring and what we deliver. This is more of a Lisa slide, she sails. But, you know, I guess one thing to point out here is we have been, we have been doing this business for 40 years, and we've gotten pretty good at it. We've made some mistakes along the way, you know, everybody's human, but we've learned from those mistakes. We've developed systems and processes that we bring to every client. We would not provide or offer to provide services if we did not bring every resource to bear to support you and your infrastructure. What that, what that means to you as your partner, and James pointed it out, the risk transfer. We have the risk in permit compliance. We have the risk in the price that we gave you that it will cost. That's, those are all guarantees and that we will provide the staff here locally to provide the operation services. The regional folks I was talking about, they are the, they are the folks that come in when there's an emergency or there's a question, a compliance concern, an operational issue or a maintenance issue. The local staff, made up of Bisbee residents, will be the people that operate the plant on a day-to-day basis. And as the bottom, at the bottom of the slide, absolutely, the city is in complete control. This is your resource, this is your infrastructure. If, should we move forward with this, with this partnership, we will just be providing the operations and the depth and the expertise and the technical experience to ensure the, your capital investment. And that's it. We were opposite of $17 million, we've got $15 million on the slide. You've got a big investment, ladies and gentlemen. This is, this is, this is real, this is meaningful, and it really needs to be cared for and operated in a way that small to mid-sized communities just don't have the technical resources to apply. It's so difficult. It's not like Phoenix that has resident experts and engineers and technical compliance folks. That's what we bring. We bring that depth and that bench strength that we can provide to you as part of our service. And at this point, I think I probably went over my five minutes, but that's me. It's Chris.
So, how did we get there? What do we do once we get started? Dave, still some of my thunder, but my thoughts will go with that. First, it's about the staff, and we want to get the right staff, you know, at your site. And we want to hire locally. We want to hire, you know, those that are part of communities. And this is one thing I'm passionate about because I grew up as the utility worker, the operator, the lead, the PM. So, I truly, it's inspiring to invest in staff and get the right, you know, work family on your site. Get them trained, invest in them. We always invest in our staff. Get them the education they need, the training they need, and as David mentioned, the support they need, whether it's regionally or globally. At every project we have, we end up with a project manager. This is the liaison between the client and staffing. It's your go-to guy at a project. Make sure they're looking at the financial pieces, making sure that the assets are getting taken care of, make sure they're under budget, things of that nature. And then, you know, followed up by three operators to support that person. We don't want to leave any stone unturned. That's why we have four FTEs proposed for this, for this site. And as you notice here, this work charge, this is an extension of Bisbee's utilities. And every community that we're in, we are an extension of that utility. We live there, we breathe there, we do volunteer work, sustainability work, you know, we're active members of the community. Some of the technical support team, those are, that's built into this work charge. There are email or phone call away. And we have anybody from regulatory compliance to safety to maintenance to, you know, software needs. And one thing that's not up here is we have buyers in our regions that find the best cost of goods and materials for our communities. We can get, you know, we have enterprise rates with multiple companies, we can get great deals. And we get the warranties that we need to make sure it's protected assets. Some of the tools that we'll be using, that we'll be implementing at the site are job safety analysis. We have, we actually have an app for that where every task, there is a pre-task plan that needs to be performed to make sure that we've evaluated that task, that we've eliminated the risks, that we go to do those tasks. We'll be developing standard operating procedures. This way, if there's only two guys left at the site, two guys or gals left at the site, and, you know, they need the material they need to know how to operate something, that material is there for them to have.
that material is there for them to have to operate that piece of equipment. We'll be incorporating some, um, Hawk Lems, which I'll touch on, and also a computerized maintenance management system. And these will kick off right away. We already got a team ready to go. So CMMS. This is really what's going to help drive your capital improvement plan. It's an asset management program. It's a proven tool that will bring to your site and it, it's a method of tracking, you know, what it costs to repair these assets, um, creating work orders to make sure that we're providing PMs, preventative maintenance on those assets. It's a method to track predictive maintenance so we can predict when things may go wrong. And, and it's also a way to generate reports that have detailed cost information for, uh, for kind of Bisbee so they can better plan and prepare for their capital improvement for repair and replacement program. And these are reports, this is transparency to the, to the client too. This is something that we'll generate reports and hand over and say, here's what it costs you to make repairs. Now it's our job to make sure that we, for preventative maintenance, to reduce the amount of repairs necessary. Next, we'll be starting up our Hawk Limb System. This is a water information management system. It's an important piece of your data management that will house anything from your SCADA or field collective devices. And it's housing a, uh, kind of a in a historian or a historian-type database. And it's, it's used to submit, um, state reports, regulatory reports, DMRs, and, and it's a method of not missing deadlines on the reports, making sure that we're not out of compliance on anything. And it's a, uh, it's a, it's a open kind of, uh, window to the client. So if, if you wanted access to this, you could click on a button, boom, get a screenshot of what you want to see. So we'll be, we'll be starting that up, um, right away and very critical of managing your data. Right now, what we saw at the facility was, um, very limited data, this is our domain and what it is. Upon approval by the council, uh, we'll be right away starting our staff onboarding and personalized training. Personalized training and, um, health, safety, compliance. We have our own proven compliance modules that our, that, that the team will undergo. We'll be starting up laboratory audits and training so they'll come onsite, we'll do a complete evaluation of your laboratory and setting up sample, sample tracking tools so that we do not miss samples and we stay compliant, we treat them compliant. Again, we'll be establishing our maintenance program, count, log in all your assets, get them in a, you know, in a web-based program so that we can generate some historical information on your assets and protect your fifteen million dollar investment. And with that all, hand over the data, we got it all. Well, this, this just covers and highlights some of, some of the key points. Uh, again, guaranteed, guaranteed staffing. You, you don't, you don't have to worry about finding certified operators. That's on us to provide. Uh, we're, we, we're responsible for the performance. We are the, the single, single point of accountability. Uh, we, again, of, you know, just, just by having us as your partner transfers a lot of risk, uh, away from the city and onto us. And we will be, uh, work really hard to ensure complete transparency. And, and, and one of the things on that busy slide that I didn't want to go too far in, we, we've always been in the top, um, in the top rated, one of the top-rated firm when it comes to ethics. And, and we stand, stand, we're really proud of it. So with that, we, we have, again, probably gone over our time, but Chris and I will stand for any questions of the governing body or retire to our seats, should that be more appropriate, certainly at the mayor and council's pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Do we have questions right now? Can you put up a seat?
Where was, where was the last time you did a volunteer effort at the city, wasn't it?
Well, we do, we do a, a children's water festival in Rio Rancho where actually be one of the charter sponsors and members. Uh, that's, that's probably the one I'm most proud of. Uh, we, we, we have a very similar event, uh, children's water festival. Oh, as I could have described it a little bit better, it's fourth grade students from, from the area, from the, the public school system. Uh, there's, there's a, a very similar activity that we do in Gallup. In fact, it's the same organization that we, that we sponsor. Uh, I guess the most recent, which, uh, I was not able to attend, uh, it's not really my strength of forte, uh, we sponsor a golf tournament. Not, you know, it's not, not a, not a huge deal. Uh, I think I'd, I'd invite Chris to discuss some of the, the, or local Arizona activities.
That's okay, I was just curious. And, and you said, um, you're great on ethics, what scale is that?
Uh, let me come back. Yeah, that's, it's, uh, for nine years ranked by Ethosphere as one of the world's most ethical companies. You know, I, I, I couldn't tell you what that's based upon other than, uh, whoever at Ethosphere is. I mean, I mean, my role, I, I, I operate. I, I, I'm, I provide service. I'm not, not a contracts guy, I'm not a sales guy. I'm, I'm here to provide a service and, and that's to ensure all of my clients have the, the operational and technical support to, to achieve the common and mutual goals. So thi- this is, you know, uh, I'm sure, uh, Lisa's got a good spiel on that, but to me, I, you know, my, my focus is on ensuring that my staff gets what they need. But I could go into more detail on some of the, we, we've, we've got community involvement activities at every project as well as, uh, a big effort towards sustainability. And, and doing everything we can to, to reduce costs, improve reliability. And, and that's, you know, a lot of the maintenance activities are focused upon reliability for maintenance activities.
You were talking about hybrid local. What, what is your, what's the actual benefits of it? How, how does it benefit you?
Well, we would, we would first, you know, we need contract. Uh, and, and, you know, and I say that tongue-in-cheek, but, uh, what, what, what we, we begin right away is a recruiting effort. Once, once we have a definitive contract set and a start date, uh, we, we begin the recruiting. And, and I, I believe it's pretty, pretty easy economics that the more local we can hire, the more, the more cost-effective we are in that there's no relocation and there's no, uh, moving cost or, or, or anything super difficult. What I, you know, what, what I have found extremely successful, other than the, the higher level, uh, you know, one of the things that we really need at, at the, the Bisbee plant is the certified operator. Now, Mario's great, let me go, but we, but the state and the EPA require a higher level of certification than Mario current, currently has. Doesn't mean he can't be a very productive member of the team, but we, we've got to bring in a manager leader that will, that, that possesses the certification and, and can lead this team. Uh, so that is, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I don't want to presume too much, but is most likely a, uh, someone that will be moving with me, uh, whether, uh, like, like when I moved to Grants, I moved my wife and two daughters to beautiful Grants, New Mexico and made, made a life. Uh, that's, that's what we would envision here. Now for the other positions, tho- those we really want to target local workforce. That is, you know, that, that's, that's, that's what, what has really proven effective in, uh, hiring, uh, I think, well, th- this is one of Ruben's, hire for attitude and train for skills. If we can get the right people with the right attitude, aptitude to learn this, this process and, and how to operate a waste water plant, we can help them and, and through our training programs, get them to a level of certification and increase their value within the industry. That's, so I, that's probably a long way around answering your question, but.
Okay. Chris, what?
Um, along that line.
It might have been, sorry.
Along that line, um, you were talking about, or on one of the slides, you showed the grade four operator, the interim that is currently there. Is that somebody that you anticipate keeping on?
Uh, no. Uh, the interim, uh, project manager, the, the, with the, with the grade four is Greg Smith. He is the project manager in, in, uh, Pima County, outside of Tucson. He, he's the project manager there. He is just one of the resources that would be supporting. Now, he will be here as much as, as necessary and needed, but what we envision is to bring in the permanent project manager as soon as possible. And I believe Chris has already been in discussions, some, some preliminary discussions with some internal and external candidates, uh, that, and, well, it, it almost certainly will be an internal candidate because it's tough enough to learn a new facility, let alone a new company. So, uh, we're, we're targeting for a, a local internal Jacobs transfer from, you know, maybe they're a, he or she is a star operator or operation supervisor and ready for that next level of advancement that we can bring them to Bisbee and learn under Chris and Greg and some of the other teams.
And along with the other employees that you, say you try to hire locally, now, will they be, will you have a job there here? Will they have to go on the website? Will they have to travel someplace to apply? Where will they get the information as far as what positions are available, uh, what salary they can expect and what benefits?
And we, we actually had a, it's funny you say that, because we had the conversation yesterday with HR, uh, and, and, and we talked about just that. And, and, uh, and, and what, what they will do is they'll, the first we've done is open requisitions. And, and, and we'll open a requisition and typically, uh, the, the, the applicants go to our website. And I, I believe there are, you know, uh, uh, already people that, uh, Chris has been in contact with, but, uh, we, we typically will run an ad in local paper, depending upon what the level of position is or in the, is it Arizona public?
So we, we typically use a hiring agency, HKA, they have their own website and they can post, it posts out to places like indie, you know, web-type job, um, recruitment sites. And, um, but we'd definitely be making that known, you know, that, hey, these jobs are posted now, it's going to be shared amongst the community. We can, we can, we can also advertise that locally as well. So it's, so it's open to public. Okay? Anything else right now?
So if we imagine you guys, rather than just hiring a grade four operator to the city, would be what? Because if we just had our own grade four operator, right? We put a job listing on the B that they came in and ran our plant, what's, so we're saying here, that is what?
Well, what, what you get in, in addition to that, that grade four operator is you get the, the support and the technical expertise of our regional support team as well as Chris, uh, Greg, myself, and, and, and being a part of an organization where there is, there's growth opportunity and, and there's, 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 uh, careers. Uh, and I, and I, I'm, I'm not saying that you could not do that, you, you absolutely could. Uh, people, cities do it, do it everywhere. It be, it's becoming increasingly difficult for, for small to mid-sized municipalities to recruit and, uh, quite frankly, retain, uh, the, the, the higher level certifications. And we, we offer that and, and we, we assure that. And even, even if, for whatever reason, uh, the, the, the level four operator that we brought in were to leave, it's on us to cover that and, and, and replace that decision and cover it in the interim. So what, what you get, you get much more than just that level four operator. But again, it's, it's a business decision that you and, and, and the, the remaining governing body decide, not, you know.
Actually, you would receive a grade four operator and three other employees.
Right.
Okay, uh, we'll probably have a neck up. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you can tell, I'm, I feel this is very morning, I'm wearing a tie. Yes, thank you. You know, I wore a really nice letter that I worked really hard on to try to explain what caught us here. Um, and again, I pass it off to Council. I've got it on email, I'll email it to whoever it is. I'll read that in a minute, but let me just state, we need help. I've been with the city for five and a half years. We need help. To, to answer, uh, Council, let's turn this question a little bit better. There's not many graded operators, three or fours, who are available. I've looked, um, uh, over the past five and a half years, about every year, we lose a superintendent, um, for various reasons, either because of they violated some city, city rule, or they, they, uh, they asked to be compensated fairly and they weren't. I put more effort into this, this five months working on this contract and trying to pick the best company and I've done anything. I, I ran a nuclear reactor and I've put more effort into this, now, don't get scared, um, than I can, operating in that reactor. So let me, let me try to stay on point and read my letter. I would like to give a little more background on why Jacobs Contract is coming to you tonight and why it's such an important decision. I worked for the city of Bisbee for five, five, five and a half years, lived here for fourteen, in this part of Arizona my entire life. If you would have told me three years ago, they would have hired a contractor, uh, to operate the wastewater plant, I would have protested and been upset. In fact, there was a mention of, I am mayor at that time, um, of doing that, and I, I was furious. We had different staff here then. I worked in wastewater my entire career in the city. Um, until recently, with some things that I led in public, um, I've had a similar responsibility. Myself and Mr. Florida, I had been working at that plant non-stop, seven days a week for five months. We've had, even on his, he'd had to take time off and he still had to come in and help and assist. We've been putting this, effort into this non-stop. That wastewater plant is the single largest, most expensive, complex piece of equipment the city owns. The repairers, the environment and the public deserves to be treated as such. This, that signifies the largest risk to this community and environment. It will be here, operating for, for years and years and years. With, uh, the, the visit we had from ADQ in June, I, there's been a few, they, they suspect that we probably have another forty or fifty years left on the plant. The committee that viewed and graded the four companies that issued proposals, those companies were Jacobs, Viola, Perk and LNE Water Systems, considered myself and two people, two people that I trust in the world and make good decisions, was Joe Morgan and Russ McConnell. Russ McConnell was the operator of the plant and was the public works director. I called Russ all the time for advice on everything because I trusted that man. He's one of the few public works directors that retired on his own, you know, by his, by his own meaning here. I, not only did I do that, I called the references of every company. I Googled their names. I did every, I even called the places that they no longer are contracted with to see why they left. I did all the work. It was like doing a job interview for a babysitter for me. We all decided as a committee that Jacobs was the best fit and the best qualified and the most ethical. Just to kind of get the plant's feedback underneath it. ADQ deals in absolutes. You either pass or you fail. That's it. When they, when they- When they, when the tests go out, because guess who's sending them out? It's, it's about limits. It's not about what the maintenance should have done. ADEQ doesn't care about that, until it fails. John Ira actually came down in the past and admonished the city council here, way before my time, for maintenance not being done at the wastewater plant. Another thing on Jacobs, Jacobs helped, it was CH2M, in fact, years and years ago, helped at our old wastewater plant to help try to get it back on his feet, but that must have been 30 years ago. Russ McConnell, we had. The plant needs its operation equipment rebuilt from the ground up, and that's something that can't be done just by hiring a few people. There are critical things going on at the plant. Mario likes using the turn hiccups. We are one hiccup away from having a major issue because maintenance has been neglected, not because of him, not because of me, not because made by the council. Every time I've come to council and asked for a part, they've gotten it for me. It's because we don't have the staff here and the knowledge anymore. The people who work for, at the plant will live here, shop here, and become members of the community, if they're not already. It will bring a system that allows anybody in the public to go online and see what maintenance is being done, what tests are being done, how do we do on those tests? And if you don't, and this is my personal promise, if you don't understand what those mean, you can call me and I'll tell you. I have no problem explaining why we, or why we check maintenance for certain things. Jacobs is a well-respected company in the field of engineering and wastewater, and I believe they're ready, they're, they're correct for the city and for the environment. At our plant, simple maintenance on equipment, funding of operation across controls, disappear or no longer in place. I have operated and maintained different types of maintenance in my life, from a nuclear reactor on the aircraft carrier to a rod crusher. And the basis from that to the other one is maintenance. We haven't had that. We can't keep people there long enough to maintain the plant. We don't have that depth in here. We have a problem at the plant that we've hired all the electricians locally to check this figured out, and guess what? It's still broken. Because it's out of the way, out of operating, like you're not seeing, people forget that we have wastewater plant until it ends up as an injury or the Harold. That certification requirements for plant operations have changed. I have reached out. I've reached out to former operators of the wastewater plant. Um, some will never work for the city again because of the way they were treated. Doesn't matter how, how highly I think of, of anybody else who's working right now at the city, former operators will not do that. When we had the issue back in June, I called them. I called Mr. Lee Ash myself, he's one of my best friends, and he, he told us he could help us out for a price. And that was a temporary, because he works for a major company right now. I've also searched online, ADEQ has a database for off, for operator certifications. There aren't any. I've contacted Douglas, and Lynn Carson has asked me for help. When I asked him for operator, he says, "Well, I was going to ask you because we lost one." Service doesn't talk to anybody, so I don't know what's going on there. Former Chico is losing operators because of retiring. That's the national trend. This isn't a local thing. Nationally, nobody wants to be in like wastewater or water. That's just, it's, they call it, I think, the silver wave. People are retiring, neighborhooders are retiring, and nobody wants to do this work anymore. In the past, when we advertised, we've always gotten an amount of applications for, if we have one opening, we get one application. When I got hired, there was two applications. When we hired Mr. Flores and Mr., uh, and, uh, Aaron for collections, we advertised for two positions, we had two applicants. We, we can't do that. We have an opportunity right now to recover from the NOV. Yes, we still have NOVs. I know, because I just got off the phone with ADEQ this morning. I talk to them at least once a week through emails, which are all publicly, uh, available. It's not just about whether or not we're passing or failing, there's more to it than that. We have a, an opportunity to recover, to increase the transparency and access to our plant, maintain our warranties and, and service schedules, manage duplicate supply inventories. We don't have a spare pump down at the wastewater plant. I, the council knows how many times I had to ask for a spare pump on emergency. When I ran collections, we didn't have that problem. I have a spare pump for everything I have in the collections field. We don't have that at the plant. The plant is the most important thing. We can do this quickly with one of the world's biggest companies that have done this for a lot, a lot other places. Further along, as far as we know, we can actually employ more people at the plant than we have in years. At one point, we had eight total employees at wastewater, four at the plant and four collections. And for whatever reason, uh, the management, not the current management, but management in the past, have decided to cut that down. We can't do that. Uh, that's, that's a 24-hour day operation, seven days a week, and you cannot have three people with only one or two having a knowledge down there. We need four people who can do everything at the plant. We need to reset it. Um, when I, when I started, I said, "We need help, we need help." We, we, it's, it's every, you know, when we have a day where Mario doesn't have to call me with a problem, that's a good day for us, you know? We don't get him a whole lot right now. I'm not saying the plant's going to fall apart, but we're close, we're really close. We need to do something right away, um, because if, there, there is, we need help, right? And I don't know, I don't know how much passion that can be. I've been there every day for seven, seven days a week. I'm getting up at four o'clock in the morning on a Sunday to go for reporting, so that I can hopefully get back home and see my kids before they wake up, and it doesn't ever happen. You know, it's just, that's it. I mean, I, I don't like wearing ties and all that, tattoos, um, this is, this is a big deal for me. I, I am willing, you know, I, I put it out on social media that I'm willing to fight anybody. Thank you for the couple people who, who reached out to me. You know, I might not agree with everybody, I definitely don't agree with me to sit on Facebook, but I'm willing to sit down with anybody and discuss and show how important this is. Um, it's not outsourcing, it's not. It's trying to get this back on this, on, on our feet. In fact, before the meeting, I discussed with Jacobs, if at any point we want to get rid of the contract, they're going to help, we're going to have people trained, other than the project manager, that's a, that's a specialty thing that we're not going to be able to steal from them. But we will have people trained to do that. I mean, what other business in town can see that they're going to train people for the actual career path? You know, this, this is the career that is the most needed right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Thank you. Oh, my name is Stephen Day, and I live in Malibu. Um, my purpose here is basically, I live in the receiving area of the effluent flow. Green Bush Draw runs right through our town. Over the past few years, I have watched it slowly degrade and realigned it alarmingly. So, and this is for transparency, this is actually more of the Jacobs people than it is for the public. I started to photo document what I thought the concerns were. I have contacted ADEQ about it. They have shown some concern about it. They are going to start to send people down there to check out. My suggestion is that because of, hmm, what has it been, about 10, 11 years worth of constant effluent here, it has completely overgrown, to the point that I have photographic evidence of this, and I'm, I've said it to them, that it literally blocks the, the storm airflow that is intended to flow through it to the lad ranch, to the recharge for the nature intended or afterward, the recharge block. And to be perfectly honest, I'm pretty adamant about it, I've been working very hard on it. My point is, is that I'm trying to stop that from happening. And if somebody's willing, wanting to take on the contract, and I have no doubt these people can't do this job well, is that they speak liabilities, is that this could be a liability if ADEQ sometime down the road in the future says, "You've got to find someplace else to put your effort." There's a lot of options for that, but they do all cost a lot of money. And basically, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ken Budge.
Thank you. Uh, Ken Budge, Old Bisbee. A lot of passionate stuff's going to happen tonight, and we're going to hear a lot of things, and I personally, I'm not going to go anything against Jacobs, it may be the right, right situation, but I have to, to me, as a rate payer and a, and a taxpayer, I have to have the numbers work. And I'm sorry, but in my evaluation of this analysis that was produced, is way off the line to say that over $900,000 is what it takes to run this plant. First thing we'll look is, if you look at page 12 on your presentation, it says a head count of two for collections and six for operations. Well, we know there's only three that are in operations, so I have to find out where the, why is there $300,000 going into operations? It's because we paid part of public works staff and public works director out of that. So, that cannot be added in to say that's part of, because that's going to continue. We're not going to get rid of our public works director or our staff. So, that's an unfair addition to, to that amount. Second, uh, really major problem here is, is under 4.2 of your contract, it says the city will pay electric, electric costs. That's $60,000. That's added in to our side of, of the ledger, but not into Jacobs' side. You can't go on a $700,000 bid and not include electricity, but we're still going to be in that pain. The last thing, of course, is the very bottom line, which is the use of emergency reserves. That's $300,000. Those emergency reserves are put in as, as revenue at the top of this page and then taken back out, and they are there for nothing more than for capital expenditures. If things go bad and things go wrong, then we're going to have to fix them. And that's what that's in there, we have the budget for those, there's nothing wrong with budgeting those. But to say those are going to be on our side of it, but not on Jacobs' side, is totally wrong. Jacobs, if something goes wrong at the plant, you're going to pay up to $75,000 in maintenance, but if something else, you're going to come back and charge us. So, that $300,000 has to come back in to your side of, of, of the analysis. When it's all said and done, the cost to, for us to use Jacobs is over $230,000 a year more than what it would be for us as we are, and it could be up as much as $300,000 if you consider the, 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 uh, the wages at a hundred, for $100,000 for what we're paying for our, our public works directors. And so, I guess my bottom final line is, before I get to red light, is, you know, jobs are the source of, um, of life for, for small towns, and to be quite honest, outsourcing is a haul, has hollowed out the American working class.
Members of council, neighbors. My concerns are more in just the general way that I see our, our city going. Typically, grand solutions are the result of a grand lack of oversight in the past. I remember a little over a year ago, when we came in and we were told that our pump stations hadn't been maintained in over 10 years, so we needed to outsource the maintenance of the pump stations at $140 now. Another month went by and we were told we no longer had enough staff in the, in the purchasing department to adequately purchase the needs of the community. We were outsourcing the purchasing to Coach East County. We now have had a problem built to the point where we need to outsource much of our public works. If we continue outsourcing at the rate we're doing right now, the only thing that'll be left at the city of Bisbee are the members that are sitting on the dais right now. We need to ensure that we probably exercise oversight, and then whenever possible, we will inward and not outward in the operations of the community. Thank you.
Paul Enrath.
Welcome, Mr. Enrath. Thank you, and thank you for your service of the community and, and the council members for yours. Um, I lived in Bisbee just six years. I retired from University of Arizona and the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health, federal government, similar to OSHA, uh, do research. And, uh, I love Bisbee, I'm going to live here the rest of my life, you know, another 12 years or so. And, uh, there's only two things, uh, in the last six years that I've disliked about Bisbee. One is the $200, uh, speeding ticket for going 40 miles an hour in a 30 mile zone around the pit. Uh, that really ticked me off, but, uh, the other is, not only costs me $200, uh, but I'm paying $300 a year more than other people in other similar communities for sewer, $300 a year. So, I just went online to see, well, is that ridiculous, what I'm paying? It seems two to three times what I've paid in the past in California and up in Tucson. There was a wastewater survey, it's the first thing you come up with when you Google wastewater costs done by a black vertech company, 50 cities, done in 2013, um, and they found that over the previous 12 years, the average cost of wastewater management went up only 20% over 12 years. Uh, the typical monthly bills for El Paso for a consumer like myself, uh, was $11 a month, this is all 2013 data, Albuquerque, $8 a month, Phoenix, $6, Tucson, 12. The average of the 50 cities that they surveyed was $11 a month. Now, are some of you other customers here in the room paying a little bit more than that?
Yeah.
Yes, and, uh, Jacobs, the, there's no way that outsourcing, getting a, a corporation with their high overhead expenses are going to reduce our cost. It costs 10 times as much for the debt management, as far as I can tell, for the $17 million plant per year, than it does for the three FTEs. Um, I ask, why don't we just hire? I don't think Jacobs can be any, uh, more efficient running a website advertisement for a skilled person than the city council would. And, uh, I think that the whole reason this last summer, despite, you know, I don't know anything about waste management, uh, is overblown with the ADEQ, uh, rejecting or finding our, uh, plant out of compliance. They'll work with the current staff to fix any compliance problems.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Soder.
Thank you. Kathy Soder, 3405 West Highway 80. Um, as a, a member of I Bisbee since its conception, I've really looked a lot at economic development. Um, one of the things that's really important in economic development is job creation, and job creation with benefits and decent salaries, not jobs where you can go and work as a bussar and not get, you know, barely make enough to survive, get 20 hours a week because they don't want to give you benefits. Um, we seem to be in a little big pattern of outsourcing here, and it's making me really nervous. We outsourced IT to Utah, um, billing and collections are being outsourced. I think Jacobs is a great choice, but can we afford it? That's my concern. Um, the city manager says it'll cost the city less than its budgeted, but how much will it cost compared to the actual cost of running a plant? Jacobs is going to charge $452,000 for staff. To the best of my knowledge, our staff, when we had a full staff, was costing us less than $200,000. But we conveniently use budgeted figures as opposed to actual figures because it looks better. There's nothing in the contract about hiring locals, not a single phrase. There is nothing in the contract with details of how they would transition out at the end of five years. Um, I know we can't hire the project manager because that's in the contract. So, are they going to help us hire somebody? What are they going to do? I think this contract needs to include a clause about hiring locals and about, uh, replacing the project manager. To the best of my knowledge, no search To the best of my knowledge, no search was ever made for a grade III operator, and we scored 86% on the ADEQ report. The five-year term has a lot of stuff in it, if you haven't read this contract closely. Unforeseen circumstances can cost more. That's overtime and equipment costs. Out-of-scope services will cost us the actual cost plus 15%. Increase in healthcare costs and taxes will increase the amount we have to pay for the employees. The city pays for capital improvements. Jacobs can spend up to $5,000 without city authorization on both capital and operations, and we know how that can be abused. If you don't know all the details of this contract, and if you think maybe there's a clause missing, please, please table it, because there's not a lot on our side in this contract. It's protecting Jacobs and not us. We're the ones that are supposed to protect us. And I think there should be clauses about locals. There should be clauses about transition plans, and they're just not there. So I do ask that maybe we table this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the only thing I know about our sore plant since 2017. I'm not going to cover this in three minutes, but I will tell you that it has the permit in it. It has the contingency plan in it. It has all of the invoices since 2017 in it. It has all the lab reports. It has all the ADEQ reports. I've read it all. I know this plant has been in compliance up until July of this year. And I have a letter right here dated September 24th from ADEQ saying that ADEQ has closed the NOB based upon its determination that the city of Bisbee has met the documenting compliance provisions. So we are currently in compliance. Here's the budget for the wastewater treatment plant. And I won't go over budget because Ken Budge has already talked about. We have actual numbers of $150,000 a year for personnel costs for the three employees, $300,000 a year for operation costs. That's $450,000. I don't know where the $900,000, those are budgeted figures, not actual figures for this year. Jacobs is saying that they will do it for $730,000 a year, but they're not talking about the additional costs that we are responsible for in the contract, as Kathy Soden pointed out. Where are my petitions? I have 150 signatures of the residents of Bisbee that do not want to outsource this plant. These petitions were gathered this weekend in two days. 150 residents of Bisbee oppose outsourcing the wastewater treatment plant. Mayor, I'm going to give you these so you can look them over. I'll give them to the city clerk, and you can have copies. You will see names of people that you know, that live in your wards, that do not want this plant outsourced. What is needed is to hire a grade III operator, and we have one right here that lives at the airport in Bisbee. He's actually willing to come back and work for the city of Bisbee. And we need to hire one to two additional employees. In talking to nearly 80 people, I am going to be cut off here. I'm just saying we need to vote no on this contract and to explore other options.
Ms. Soden, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kamala. Kelly Gallagher?
Thank you. Thank you. A lot of things I want to thank have been made well by Ken Budge and by Kathy and Paul. So I'll just say that Bisbee is a poor, poor city financially. And as a city, our pockets are only empty when it comes to the rank and file city staff getting raises or building a park or improving the animal shelter. But this city and this council is able to invent money just out of thin air when it comes to giving the city manager a very generous raise or committing to a multi-year, multimillion-dollar contract or refinancing our debts. This council lacks moral priorities. There's a lot of lip service about kids and working families and first responders and loyal and overworked city staff, but it's just talk. We're once again going to pull $100,000 out of the air and throw at this emergency. I urge the council to not accept this contract.
Mr. Green?
Yes, Mayor. I wanted to address Councilman Hansen's question on termination. The way I read the contract is that the city is agreeing to a five-year term, and it will automatically renew every five years unless the city provides notice six months before the expiration of the five-year term that you want to back out of the contract. So it's a five-year term. Now, there are clauses for if there's a breach of the contract that can be cured, then that allows you to get out of the contract early. Parts of the contract, you will have an opportunity to renegotiate based on costs and things of that nature. But I do want you to understand that you are locking yourself into five-year term unless there's some sort of breach. So I want to make that clear because I don't know if that was clear earlier.
Right, a breach of contract.
Why?
We've got to be, excuse me, it's up to six months you can break it. Excuse me, sir. You need to be recognized first, okay? And I was indicating that a breach is under what circumstances?
A breach of the contract.
And I'm saying circumstances, I mean, how many days?
If it's a breach of contract, you have to provide, please. 30, 30, notice within 30 days, and you have to provide, I believe there's a cure period.
Okay, right. Ms. Green, sir.
So this bothers me because when that question was asked by Ms. Hansen, you were led incorrectly by the city manager, who should have a lot more knowledge of us. So to go through with this with not having much information and to be led astray on that simple question bothers me.
That's not right.
We were under the impression that this could be broken and looked at every six months. Am I right, Ms. Hansen? Is that the impression that you got?
You said it would be.
That we could cancel the contract.
Cancel it with no, you know, ill will to us. And even, sorry, I don't remember the name, but he even said, oh, when we get out of this, we're going to help you guys. No, that's not it at all. That's not it at all.
That's not what I heard, but then again, I did read it, so maybe I misunderstood. Well, it's a, Mr. Smith.
Mayor, council, and Mike. I was talking with Elda about this very, after I answered Councilman Hansen's question. Either party can terminate the agreement for a material breach, either party. And it's terminated within 30 days if the breach isn't remedied. The contractor may terminate the agreement if we fail to make a payment within 10 days after they've told us that we're late. There are multiple opportunities for the parties to come to an impasse and agree that they're going to terminate the agreement. And the six-month review was, there is a calendar date every year that is the date of the signature of the agreement that we will renegotiate the terms of the agreement and the costs on that day. And about six months after that date, which is about when we adopt a budget, we review our performance on that contract and anticipate what our costs will be in the next year. So we actually are reviewing the performance of the contract twice a week. Those were the two things that I said.
Ms. Green, you have any questions?
To me, what you just said, Mr. Smith, contradicts what Ms. Ordunio just told us.
Is that right, Ms. Ordunio?
I would think that the parties, based on the terms of the contract, you can negotiate, but you have to come to an agreement. You're not going to be able to back out of this contract just because you don't like it. You're entering into a contract. It's a written agreement.
So that is not what Mr. Smith is saying.
I think what Mr. Smith is saying is that the city has an opportunity to renegotiate the contract terms depending on costs, depending on things of that nature, just like Jacobs does. But at the end of the day, it's an agreement. You all have to agree. It's not going to be a unilateral decision that you can just back out or you can just change a term. You're bound by the terms of this agreement.
That's right. Okay, and then, and, you know, it's provided that if there's a breach of contract on either side, okay, what constitutes a breach?
Right.
That's not defined. So we are stuck for five years regardless.
Actually, isn't a breach of contract, it's a legal?
It could be a number of things, and legal analysis does go into it. I mean, it could be non-payment. Like in here, it says if the city stops making payments, that's not about a breach for Jacobs, and they can cancel the contract. They consider that a breach. That's the only thing here that's really defined. I don't know what they would consider a breach of contract would be, or what we would consider. We just have to come up. I can't answer that question at this point.
And we really don't even know if there would be a fee associated with canceling your contract and how much that fee is, correct?
The way the contract is written right now, there is no, like, penalty for breaking the contract early. I didn't see anything like that. There's no early termination clause, in other words, where if you want to get out early, just pay this much and then you can be out. I didn't see anything like that in this.
So I would assume that this is purposely omitted because we are bound by a five-year contract.
Okay, any other questions?
Could you address Mr. Budge's concerns? I don't remember what Mr. Budge said about the contract. But could you address the concerns of? Let's see. I'm going to look back at my notes.
What was electricity?
Electricity and... Yeah, I think in looking at, I did get an email from Mr. Budge about ensuring that costs were on both sides of comparison. And the way I'm looking at this, we have X amount of money set aside in order to operate the plant this year. And we are able to do that with the approved budget that we have. The city paying the electrical costs, that's going to come out of our pocket. I don't know why we would add that in on top of the contract costs from Jacobs. We are going to pay that. You have to pay that because of the tax exempt status of our prior funding. But we don't need to add that number to both sides because we're only going to cut Jacobs a fee for the services that they provide. I think that if you look at power generation in a plant and our ability to offset our consumption with solar, this is particularly advantageous to the city because we generate a lot of our own electricity there. And in fact, we're able to sell electricity to create a positive balance. So I don't think that electricity is a sticking point for the agreement.
Was it added in? Because that's my question. Was it added in on the contract?
The $300,000.
Mr. Budge, you need to be recognized.
Well, they're asking, the council member just asked what his concerns were. Please let him say what his concerns.
Do we have the notes about what he indicated?
Well, I do have the $300,000 mentioned.
You know, you're not passionate.
And there was, I believe, Mr. Budge's problem with that was that the $300,000 is reserve funds that are set aside only for capital, it's matured. That's not my issue.
Is that correct, Mr. Budge? Is that what you said? We're adjusting to $300,000.
$300,000 is going on to the city side, and you showed us over $900,000. Those are not set for any particular item. Those, it's a placeholder. So it's not an expense until you have to spend it. Whether the city spends them or Jacobs spends them, they're still going to be spent. So those have to be balanced on both sides. The $300,000 is showing up on the city's $900,000 estimate, and they're showing $700,000. You've got to either take it off of the city side or add it to theirs to be even. That's what I'm saying. Same with the electric. You're adding it to the $900,000, but you're not adding it to theirs. And the same thing with over $100,000 that we're creating for Public Works employees. That either has to be added to theirs or taken away from ours. I think we're talking past each other. There's... When you take the wastewater treatment plant's costs out of the sewer...